Hey, we're live. October 26, 2021, regular meeting of... Welcome to the October 26, 2021, regular meeting of the Calvers County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, can you read off closed session? Let's do it one item at a time today, so for opportunity to comment on each one individually, please.
Yes. Closed session for today, October 26. Item 1, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins, Nick Marvin, and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association (CCPSA), Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any public comments on this item?
There is no public comment on these items.
With that, can you please give us item 2?
Item 2 for today's closed session. Item 2, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Public comment. Anyone in the audience would like to make public comment on this item? Sir?
Can I take this out?
Yes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Michael Gorley. I am the Sonora Division Manager for George Reed. For those of you that don't know, George Reed has been a general engineering contractor in the Central Valley and the foothills for over 50 years. George Reed has provided quality workmanship over the years and construction services, including grading, paving, and concrete, as well as reliable construction materials from our local sources, including aggregates, asphalt, and concrete. George Reed's managerial and labor force are predominantly Calaveras County residents, not all, but a very good percentage of them are. And if you don't know, I am here representing George Reed as it relates to the bid protest it has filed for the bid that was let September 30th for Highway 4 Wagon Trail Realignment Project Phase 1. Our competition on this bid, I believe there were five bidders. Our competition, who was the apparent low bidder, Suket LLC, realized that George Reed's bid protest was valid at the time it was filed and elected to retain legal counsel to respond to George Reed's bid protest. Our counsel, that is George Reed's legal advisories, recognized that Suket's bid violated several statutes of the Subletting and Subcontracting Fair Practices Act. These infractions are identified and outlined in our bid protest submitted to Robert Packenger, the Public Works Director. It is for these reasons that GRI believes Suket's bid be considered non-responsive and be rejected. George Reed respectfully requests that the Wagon Trail Highway 4 Realignment Contract be awarded to George Reed as the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. I think that identifies what I wanted to make you aware of relative to what I believe you're going to be looking at in closed session shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Michael Gorley. Is there any further public comment to this item? Anything else there?
There is no public online comment.
Thank you. With that, we'll move into closed session.
Can we tell if there are Zoom?
I'm sorry, just a moment, sorry.
Are there any people on Zoom that have contact with this meeting?
I can see the participants, and there was no...
Welcome back to the October 26, 2021, regular meeting of the Calvers County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Gueramendi, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please rise if you're able to. Join me in our nation's pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have a report out on closed session?
Report out from closed session from today, October 26. Item 1, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins, Nick Marvin, and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organization: Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association (CCPSA), Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. Board action, no reportable action. Item 2, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case. Board action, no reportable action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Staff announcements. This is time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Ms. Lisa Medina.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa, respective board members, CIO Krista Von Lada, Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Today, we kick off our second annual Halloween event at the animal shelter here at the Government Center. We are requesting dog and cat food and treats and toys for our shelter and our community animals. A special thank you goes out to Patty and her crew with Spence Ranch Feed and Supply, who donated over a pallet of food already. And another special thank you to Gail and her crew with Country Feed &amp; More, who donated over 60 bags of food as well. We would like to thank our Calaveras community for supporting animal services. We are committed to providing services for our Calaveras animals and our humans. Come see us. We will even have treats for the humans and no worries. If you miss this event, we are planning on another event around Thanksgiving. We are located at 901 Jeff Tuttle Drive. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at 209-754-6744. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Ms. Corey Allen.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board, Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency. Today, I have Jennifer Pruden. She's a supervisor within our Eligibility Division of Human Services, who's going to talk about our outstations. Jennifer?
Good morning, all. Good morning, Board and Calaveras County residents. I am happy to announce that the Copperopolis Health and Human Services Agency outstation has moved. We have partnered with the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office substation, and they have graciously allowed us to join their space. We're super excited for their partnership, and we appreciate Sheriff D. Basilio and Under Sheriff Macedo for all their help in getting us moved into their space and set up alongside them. The Calaveras County Copperopolis outstation is open every Tuesday from 12 to 4 to serve our community. For anything that Health and Human Services could do here in the main office, we'll do that.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Public health update. Informational item. Public health services. Receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. Ms. Corey Allen, you're back on the hot seat.
Good morning, Chairman Stoppa, members of the Board, Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency. With me today, we have Doug Archer, and we also have Dr. Ramirez and our Deputy Director of Public Health, Colleen Rodriguez. So we wanted to give you a brief update on where we're at with our COVID-19 response. COVID by the numbers, what we want to do is generally update you. We are at 3,788 confirmed cases of COVID-19, 76 are currently active cases, and 3 hospitalized. This data is as of 4:00 p.m. yesterday. We did have 82 deaths to date with COVID-19, and tests that we've conducted have exceeded 60,000. Now, we are currently at 55 and 1/4% of our eligible population that are fully vaccinated. We're happy to see that number moving forward. Now, over on the right of the slide, you'll see we are less than 30% of the youth that are eligible for full vaccination. Statewide, they're closer to 60%. So you can see some of our concerns lie in that particular population. Now, recently, we had a state press release from the State of California Public Health and the California Health and Human Services that reaffirmed the importance of masking in school settings, kindergarten through 12th grade. The reason behind that is that the vaccinations are continuing to grow, and for us here in Calaveras County, we are, like I just mentioned, one-half of the state's percentage of eligible youth that are fully vaccinated. So we are far behind, and because of that, we fully support this masking mandate. Calaveras County does not have any ability to modify these state directives that have been reaffirmed. What's next? This winter, as you can see, the weather is changing. People will be heading indoors. It's crucial that people become as protected as they can. First ways, through a vaccine. Other ways, as we've mentioned for the past two years, is by wearing a mask, washing hands, and keeping distance. Halloween is right around the corner. Opportunities for us again to keep that distance, keep our kids safe, keeping hands clean, trick-or-treating opportunities, try and maintain as an outdoor activity. COVID-19 vaccines, they are extremely protective against severe disease, and this includes in our teenage population. In a recent CDC report, 97% of hospitalizations and all of the ICU admissions of teenagers were those who were unvaccinated. Now, also, we are coming into flu season. So on September 9, some have seen the reports that there was conversation about a combination booster that included a flu shot. We are far away from seeing that come to life, but I know that there have been questions about that, so I just wanted to draw your attention. Clinical testing will take some time on that, and it will be several months out. So as you're hearing conversations about COVID-19 and flu vaccine, you can get them at the same time. They will not be combined. But what we are doing in Calaveras County is providing a drive-through flu clinic. Calaveras High School, November 6. We will be there for two hours in the morning and then the remainder of the afternoon. You can register at MyTurn. What's new in the world of boosters? I know tons of questions. Our hotline's been alive with questions. The FDA has authorized Janssen and Moderna boosters, and it includes mixing and matching. The CDC Advisory Council did meet last week to talk about boosters, and there'll be a meeting for the majority of today with the FDA to talk about that 5- to 11-year-old population and the vaccines that we expect to see in the future. There will be future meetings on that to continue to address this early in November. And just as a reminder for those boosters, for Pfizer and for Moderna, the following groups are eligible, and this is after six months from your second shot, 65 years and older, and anyone who's 18 and older who either live in a long-term care setting, have an underlying medical condition, or work in a high-risk setting. I want to clarify, this is through self-attestation at MyTurn. So if you believe you fall into those categories, use MyTurn, and that will be a way where you can schedule yourself for a booster. J&amp;J booster shots are recommended for anyone 18 and older who were vaccinated two or more months ago. So just wanted to make sure that you all have that information and to remind you once again that vaccines are effective. And I know that we've had recent news around the untimely death of General Colin Powell. He was 84 years old. He was immunocompromised due to a multiple myeloma, which is a cancer of the blood, was at very high risk for severe complications and disease. So we don't want to take stories like that and assume that a vaccine is not effective. What we want to remember is the importance of herd immunity, and that comes by each and every one of us taking our time and part in getting ourselves protected. We still have our COVID hotline, 754-2896. Every weekday, the hotline is hot, usually in the mornings, and it tends to die down in the afternoons. I will say we've had the most positive population of callers calling in and really being faithful for the opportunities for finding testing and vaccine right here in Calaveras County. And you will see that we continue to have a very active man with an incredible staff that is still here from the state, supporting our local community. They work every day except Wednesday. You can do testing as a walk-in. With the vaccine, we recommend using myturn.ca.gov. And the reason for that is you want to make sure that the availability is there and that any restrictions that might be in place at the state level, you have sorted through before you walk through the doors. We just really want to make sure that you don't find yourself frustrated when you get there. We continue to have a homebound initiative. If you have a specific reason why you are homebound, we will come to you. That information is here on the slide and can be found on our website. So with that, other testing opportunities to continue through OptinServe in Sonora and Amador Counties. And of course, myturn.ca.gov is where you're going to find the information that you need. I want to make sure to pass this now to Doug Archer to talk about our local hospital and how we're doing there.
Corey, good morning, everyone. So currently at the hospital, let's see, we have three COVID patients in-house right now. That's a pretty significant jump. For the past, well, pretty much the entire month of October, we only had one COVID patient, and we just admitted two more in the past couple of days. So, you know, when you're dealing with small numbers, I do think, I do think that's a little bit of a, maybe a misnomer, that one going to three, technically it's tripling our volume, but I don't think that really represents what's happening. Our ER visits related to COVID have continued to decrease. Yesterday, we saw three patients in the ER that were COVID-related symptoms or wanted testing, whereas, you know, in September and August, we were seeing more like 18, 20. So we've seen a pretty significant decline there. The other item that I would think might have your curiosity is the impact of the vaccine mandate on our staffing here at the hospital. And, you know, it's definitely been a rollercoaster for all of us here, especially the staff. We are not, thankfully, we are not losing a lot of staff over this. There's one person that was already planning to retire that has chosen to retire early, and then we have two other staff that, after Thursday, will be on unpaid leave, given the opportunity to change their mind about vaccine, being vaccinated. But other than that, so that's really three total staff out of about 330. So one person or so, thankfully. So we still have, you know, a large amount of staff. Our overall census today is 10. Again, three of those are COVID-positive. And 10 is about our average. Our budgeted, or our average daily census over the past couple of years has been about eight and a half to nine, but by now. So we're doing fairly well. Again, keeping a close eye on the COVID census. Of those three COVID patients that we have in-house, two are in the ICU, and one is in MedServ, our general care floor. The two in the ICU, one is intubated. The other was intubated, and they were extubated on Sunday evening, and they're doing pretty well. So that's a good sign. I think that's, I think that's it from the hospital side, unless there's any questions.
Any board questions for Mr. Archer? Ms. Coway.
Mr. Archer, do you know how many Calaveras residents might be in other hospitals besides Mark Twain?
I don't have that number. No, I don't know if public health does, but I don't have that information. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Also, before we ask further questions, Chairman, Dr. Ramirez is here and is also available to discuss any topics currently in front of you, specifically around that vaccine effectiveness.
I just wanted to go back really quick to Slide 8. I think the last time I spoke to everybody here, I mentioned, you know, it was still kind of up in the air with regards to booster status and the allowing of mixing and matching. So the CDC doesn't necessarily, they're not making any big recommendations for what we call heterologous, or mixing and matching of vaccines, but they are allowing it. Under the J&amp;J Booster Shot tab on that Slide 8, one thing I did want to kind of bring to everybody's attention was that is recommended for anybody regardless of their risk factors at more than two months versus the mRNA vaccine, the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. A booster is only recommended only after six months, only if somebody meets one of those high-risk criteria. The other thing I wanted to let everybody know is that the data that was, that's being looked at for J&amp;J, found that J&amp;J booster shots alone were slightly less effective with regards to antibody production versus somebody who might have received a J&amp;J shot initially and then followed up with either a Moderna or Pfizer booster shot. Once somebody did receive a Moderna or Pfizer booster shot, in addition to the J&amp;J booster, their antibody response came close to that of Pfizer and Moderna with their initial shot series.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Any more questions? Public comment? Thank you, Susan.
There is no online public comment.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience? Bring it back to the board. Any further questions of Dr. Ramirez, Ms. Allen, or Mark Twain, Doug Archer? Thank you very much for the update. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. And Chairman, I just want to acknowledge the incredible work of our public health department, the staff, the leadership there, that they have been doing for an extraordinary amount of time. I think I fail to say it enough that the work is tireless, and they are continuing to show up day in and day out. And so thank you, Colleen. Thank you to the team for incredible work, day in and day out.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Recognition and acknowledgements. Item 4, proclamation. Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, Adapa Proclamation Honoring Dixie... Ms. Coway, how would I pronounce that last name?
Limebaugh.
Limebaugh. As a Calvers County Centenarian. Ms. Coway.
So the white pine community here. I'm Marita. We're here to honor you today. Can you hear me, or do Ms. Limebaugh need to move up?
I can hear you. She can walk up.
Ms. Coway? Yeah. Thank you.
Jane, is it okay if I, is it okay if I take my hat? Hi. So this is on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. And I'm going to talk about you. Is that okay?
I hope it's all good.
I don't know. There's a little bit in here. Yes. Whereas Dixie Lee Johnson Limebaugh was born in San Antonio, Texas. Have you lost your Texas accent, ma'am? Yeah, okay. On October 30, 1921, and whereas Dixie and her parents and four siblings moved to California during the Depression for a better life, the family picked fruit, nuts, worked in the packing sheds to survive during their first years in California. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Within a few years, her father was hired to manage a large ranch in Imperial, where there was plenty of food and work for all. And one of Dixie's favorite memories, when a teacher would take the whole class, 10 kids, and her old jalopy out to the desert. She said it was a funny sight. There was an old jalopy, the teacher, her big old dog, and hanging on the fenders and the rumble seat piled, y'all were piled on top of each other in the backseat, bouncing down the road with the torn canvas flapping in the wind. Do you remember that too? Yeah. During World War II, Dixie and her husband Ed lived in San Francisco. My daughter was born there. Did you have any kids born in San Francisco? No. Where they worked to help with the war effort. And during her days off, she explored San Francisco, went to Chinatown, the zoo, and the ocean. They later moved to the San Joaquin Valley to raise their four children. In 1964, Dixie and Glenn married. She quickly became the company bookkeeper, go-to girl, payroll clerk, camp cook, and a multiple other jobs for SC Limebaugh Logging Company. I feel like I'm talking about the history of White Pines. I mean, you can't say Limebaugh without saying White Pines or vice versa. Dixie has had a fortunate life and has contributed to many local and neighboring charities. She was a devout member of the Quilters Independent Soul Group, and they're having another quilting show this year. She supported many fundraising groups such as Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, fed the hungry, clothed the, clothed the homeless, and many other private locals in need. Anyone could come and get a meal and leave with a few bucks in their pocket. No stray dog or cat left once they arrived. And they got a good taste of the eats from their home. Dixie has supported a multitude of charities throughout her life, but the ones that did her heart are the Indian Schools. Yeah. Yeah. Good thing I wore the waterproof mascara today. Over the years, she has supported several children from toddler age through graduating high school. She provided them with countless school items, warm clothing, and funding to simply survive. Dixie now lives in Valley Springs, which for any of you who want to know, it is in Calaveras County, though if you're from White Pines, you're never too sure. Where she enjoys visiting with her grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchildren. Some of Dixie's favorite pastimes are reading, word puzzles, watching cowboy movies, and embroidering. So my colleagues, I'd like you to proclaim and recognize Ms. Limebaugh as a Centenarian and congratulate her. Oh, my heavens. I am just so honored to be able to do this. Would somebody give me a motion? Come on.
So moved.
Thank you Supervisor Garamendi.
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor Tuffinelli. Do you have something you want to say?
Awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you.
One hundred years is just, very awesome.
Before I call for the vote, is there any public comment on this? Ms. Limebaugh, did you want to say anything? Yeah. Hi. Can I just say that I'm inspired? When I go to get up. Thank you. I'm now fully inspired. When I go to get up out of that chair and I have to grab onto something and groan and go, I'm never going to groan again. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any public comments?
There's no public online public comments.
Okay, could I please call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Don't say anything. It passes on a five oh vote of the board. And it's clear and honor for our Board of Supervisors to recognize you on this auspicious occasion. Thank you, and thank you for coming and sharing.
Thank you, Dixie.
Thank you, family.
And we appreciate your presence in Valley Springs, even though Marita doesn't know where that is.
Thank you. Thank you all for doing this.
What are we supposed to do?
I think they're all done with you now.
Pardon?
I'm going to take a photo of you guys.
Oh, okay. Okay. Now she wants to take your pictures, so you need to take a step off. Would you all like to come and have your picture taken? Is that you, Lana?
I'm Lana.
Hi Stacy.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Thank you so much for your help.
Yes, thank you.
You should come with us. And we're all similar height and everything.
Right. Thank you, Stacy. Thank you. Stacy, can you do another one so that we have it too?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks. We're ready. Are you ready?
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Item five, proclamation. Administrative office. Adopt a proclamation recognizing and honoring Ed Lark for 20 years of distinguished public service in the public access television studio. Ms. Callaway, could you please? Mr. Lark?
Mr. Lark.
Good to see you.
Hi, Marita.
Oh, I took my mask off.
Can you take mine off?
Is that okay? Yes, please.
You're going to take it off. I'll take mine off.
Yes. I feel like we are honoring you, Ed, but I feel like every time I see you, I honor you. I meant, where's Joanie?
Oh, she's home.
Well, where do I get hold of her? Anyway, this is a proclamation recognizing you for everything that you've done for community TV. Ed graduated from the University of California, Berkeley, with a degree in engineering and a minor in business. He owned a successful business, Lark Productions, during which time he produced documentary, travel-oriented films for presentation and auditoriums throughout the U.S. and Canada from 1956 to 2001. He, Mr. Lark, organizes and established Lark Tours, which specialized in tours to European countries from '72 to '78. He produced a 15-minute film for Calaveras Development Company, which promoted life and activities along Highway Four in 1967. And for full public disclosure, Mr. Lark is a constituent, but more important, his wife's a friend of mine.
I was going to ask this question. How did you learn all this stuff?
Oh, my God. I am like a supervisor, Ed. I know this.
Things that only Joanie would know.
Oh, really? Mr. Lark was contracted by Sierra Constructors to videotape all aspects of the Spicer Dam project for archival purposes from 1985 to 1989. Do they archive the fact that I had to live where I'm living because everybody was working on the Spicer project?
Absolutely.
That's, I'm living where I'm living because of the Spicer project. Mr. Lark produced a 19-minute promotional video for Calaveras Big Trees State Park, which highlighted the giant sequoias and the park's various year-round activities in 1998. His 18 feature-length films were selected by National Geographic Society to be featured on their Film Lectured Series in Washington, D.C. Mr. Lark has presented over 6,000 shows and lectures to audiences ranging in size from 200 to 7,000. Mr. Lark was an instructor of photography at Columbia College, teaching photographic theory, proper use of lenses, composition, fieldwork, and darkroom skills from 2001 to 2007. He began his career with the county as a manager of public access television studios in 2001. He's helped numerous people with their videography and filmmaking skills through classes and individual assistance. And if any of you have been to the studio, you always know there is some intern learning how to do what you, your skill that you share with them, with all of us. They haven't learned to Photoshop yet. You got to get that in. Mr. Lark has memorialized countless local events, like the Government Center frog jump when Supervisor Garamendi won. Really? The Calaveras County Queen Fair contest, and countless concours de elegance through his films and different parades throughout the county. So, my colleagues, if you would please join me in honoring Mr. Lark, may I have a motion on this proclamation?
So moved.
A motion by Supervisor Tuffinelli, the second.
Second.
By Supervisor Garamendi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's a good thing. The motion passed five oh, Ed, that the Board of Supervisors on today hereby honor and recognize you for your 20 years of service and express their appreciation for your loyalty and friendship today. Are you, wait a minute. I thought, wait, before I give you this, are you retiring the end of this year? Yes or no?
Well, I'm supposed to know the retire on Friday.
Friday. Got it.
Yeah. But I won't be gone.
Okay. And I have to say, Ed's wife, Joan, has also, when you see Ed out in the field, you see Joan.
Yes, very often.
So please thank her very much on behalf of the board.
I will, I will. Did I do all of that?
No. No. Of course not. You did more than that. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ed.
Thank you. Oh, my goodness.
So you didn't picture?
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I appreciate you doing that. I was most kind.
Are we still on the schedule for tomorrow, Mr. Lark? You aren't going to be gone tomorrow, are you?
I'm sorry.
You're going to be there tomorrow, right?
You're going to be there tomorrow?
Oh, beware tomorrow.
The television station.
Well, I, I know on Friday, I'm supposed to be videotaping the Halloween event.
Okay, excellent.
And also the awards, but no one mentioned anything other than that. Tomorrow, Wednesday, I've got you.
I'll see you there. And good to see you today. We appreciate your time.
I've got you. And Thursday, we're filming as well. So I've had a busy week for my last week here, but that's okay.
Well, I, I'm pleased that I get to see you when I go in here this last time, so. And hopefully you can volunteer and keep helping in the future.
Well, that's what I plan to do in, in the future, although I want to take a month or two off so I don't have to get up at 5:00 every morning. That's, that's going to be my, I think, my favorite, favorite, should size change in my lifestyle.
I can appreciate that. I hope to do that sooner than later myself.
Very, very nice last interview that's up on the pine tree right now.
Oh, yes. It was nice. We have a copy for you. Did you get it yet?
No, I haven't.
Oh, well, you will. It'll be in your box. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, all of you. I really appreciate your support that you have provided over the years, and it'll always be with me. There'll be wonderful memories that I've had during the 20 years that I've been here, and it won't be the end because I still want to contribute to the various events of the county and here also. So I won't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lark.
I think it's important that we not let him go before we remind everyone who is out there watching this on TV, that it's because of Ed and his work that we can actually go back and research and, and stay engaged in our community. So kudos to Ed. And by the way, you mentioned Joan, and she is like probably the longest-standing school board member, dedicated, amazing. So what a team, huh?
Thank you, I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Thank you, Mr. Lark.
Were you, were you part of this resolution? Did you have anything to do with it?
Public, oh, general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Public comment.
There is no online public comment?
Okay. And I'm double-checking with the audience. That concludes the public comment period, or general public comment period. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Anybody in the audience like to pull a consent agenda item? Board member or staff member? Anybody else?
So I wasn't sure if I was going to do this or if you were going to do this. Would you please pull the resolution recognizing the Calaveras County Arts Council from your consent agenda, and I promise I won't even go three minutes.
Item seven?
Yes.
Yes, number seven.
I don't know. I can't deal with that right now.
Anybody online that would like to pull an item? With that, I'll entertain a motion on the remainder.
Move.
Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf.
Second.
A second by Mr. Garamendi. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a five oh vote of the board. Item number seven. Please.
Good morning and thank you. I'm Kathy Mazzafaro, and believe it or not, I'm starting my sixth year as your executive director for the Calaveras County Arts Council. Yeah.
That receives no government funding. I think I can't give your speech.
You're so good.
And it doesn't. We do receive a grant, but that's for administrative purposes. This wonderful county supports our, our signature events, music in the parks, ovations, the artist studio tour, and the item nearest and dearest to all of our hearts, and that's the support of education and the arts for all of our local kids. I just wanted to come in and thank you for the resolution. We are beginning the grant process stage with the state, and having your resolution recognizing us as the Calaveras County Arts Council is a critical step in achieving the next grant. Very briefly, during this matter of COVID, we adhered to all state regs. In fact, in March of last year, we shut the gallery down to the public. I moved the office to my kitchen, and we ran the Arts Council from my kitchen and from my assistant Maggie Sloan's up in Forest Meadows. But we thought creatively, as artists do, and Maggie put together a fabulous art show totally online, highlighting all of the art from different artists throughout the county. We sold over $3,000 worth of local art last summer in '20. And the other item that came back to life, the lights are slowly coming on, is music in the parks resumed this last summer. It was fabulous, and we had a wonderful turnout. We are moving forward cautiously with ovations. This wonderful county supports our signature events, Music in the Parks, Ovations, the Artist Studio Tour, and the item nearest and dearest to all of our hearts, and that's the support of education and the arts for all of our local kids. I just wanted to come in and thank you for the resolution. We are beginning the grant process stage with the state, and having your resolution recognizing us as the Calaveras County Arts Council is a critical step in achieving the next grant. Very briefly, during this matter of COVID, we adhered to all state regs. In fact, in March of last year, we shut the gallery down to the public. I moved the office to my kitchen, and we ran the Arts Council from my kitchen and from my assistant Maggie Sloan's up in Forest Meadows. But, we thought creatively, as artists do, and Maggie put together a fabulous art show totally online, highlighting all of the art from different artists throughout the county. We sold over $3,000 worth of local art last summer in '20. And the other item that came back to life, the lights are slowly coming on, is Music in the Parks resumed this last summer. It was fabulous, and we had a wonderful turnout. We are moving forward cautiously with Ovations, our professional performing arts program. We cannot be in our local schools, so we will not be using the Bret Hart Theater. But, thinking creatively, we're going to have our first concert in the Alhambra Music Room at Ironstone Vidyards, and we're going to make it a party. It's going to be a champagne reception with hors d'oeuvres on Sunday, December 5th. I'll make sure you get a mailer, but I invite all of you to attend because we are invited the Golden Bough, and they're going to present a Celtic Christmas to kick off the holiday season. The arts are what bind us all together. It bound us together during the Butte Fire. It binds us together during times like this. We even have a small display right now that we're working with our local Sheriff's Department and their pink badges, and Mark Twain Hospital for the support and raising awareness of breast cancer. I thank you so much for recognizing what we do and for approving the resolution. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, Kathy. We do appreciate the work you do. Is there any board comments or questions? That public comment? Thank you, Ms. Marty Crane. I'll bring it back to the board and entertain a motion.
I move this item.
Thank you. A motion by Ms. Marita Callaway.
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Gary Toffenelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board.
Thank you so very much.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
That concludes our consent agenda.
At this time, we have scheduled the public meeting to start at 10:30. Things proceeded quite a bit quickly and smoothly this morning, so we're going to take a break, let's say, return by 10:25 to, so that we can be on the schedule for 10:30 for the public session. Is that correct, Ms. Clerk? I'm going to double-check my agenda here just once before I call for this. Yeah, redistricting public hearing is the only thing on our regular agenda.
Supervisor announcements.
That's, that's, that's post-redistricting Mr. Toffenelli.
That sounds very good.
Break time. Break. At this time, we'll move on to our regular agenda, redistricting public hearing. The hearing will commence at 10:30 a.m. or immediately after the conclusion of any item being discussed or acted upon at 10:30 a.m. Item 18, informational item. County clerk, recorder, and registrar of voters, conduct a public hearing and receive a presentation regarding the 2021 redistricting process and provide staff direction regarding map alternatives. At this time, I'll open the public meeting, hearing, and I'll ask everyone to please have a quiet moment. Ms. Rebecca Turner will be presenting for us, and we'll move forward with the public hearing further after her presentation. Ms. Turner?
Couldn't tell if my mic was on. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to go over, try to be brief, presentation, but I don't want to miss anything, so feel free, if you think I'm not covering anything, to go through it. So, just to begin, I wanted everybody to know, our website does contain an overview of the process, the timeline, which has changed throughout this process, hopefully, it's pretty nailed down now, and the community mapper. So, the community can continue submitting community of interest maps and public comment on the community mapper, and the draft map viewer is available, and we'll continue adding alternate drafts as we go through this process, and the community can comment on that. Any public comment that was received prior to us posting the agenda last Wednesday is going to be discussed today. Anything that we received after we posted the agenda, we'll discuss on November 9th at the next community meeting. So, the timeline. The next public hearing is scheduled for November 9th. We'll continue soliciting public comment, and we'll be discussing with the board potential changes to alternative maps that have been drafted so far. The issue with the timeline is, the deadline is December 14th. So, if we have, well, the deadline's December 15th. The last scheduled board meeting is December 14th, and we have to adopt a map by that date. However, if you wait till December 14th, it does extend, I'm trying to think of the word, prevent us from opening the petition and lose on January 3rd. So, if we wait to adopt till December 14th, we can't open the filing, the petition and lose, until January 11th. So, that is the biggest, in my viewpoint, change with not adopting by December 7th. The drop dead deadline to open the signatures and lose filing period timely is December 7th. Other than that, there's no major impact. The elections office needs those 28 days to adjust the lines for voting. Does that make sense? And then, of course, we've got June 7th election coming up. Does anyone have questions about the timeline before I move on? So, we have five supervisory districts. I was asked during this process, well, can we adjust that number to fix some of our issues? No, we cannot adjust the number of districts that the county has. Every 10 years, we need to take the population data given to us by the Census Bureau and make those five districts equal in population once again. So, population changes over time, and it's the county's responsibility to even out those districts every 10 years with the census data provided. This process is called redistricting, and it's important ensuring that each board member represents the same number of constituents. In Calaveras County, the Board of Supervisors is responsible for drawing the supervisory districts. When redistricting, the county is required to use the most recent census data. Redistricting determines which neighborhoods and communities are grouped together in a district for the purpose of voting on their supervisor. Hold on. I have this far I'm trying to get rid of because I can't see my screen. Do you know how to get rid of it?
Should we be able to do it down?
Okay, thank you, Stacy. What's wrong with our current districts? Why can't we keep them the way we are, the way they currently are? Counties are required to redistrict every 10 years following the federal census, so the county doesn't have an option. We can't just forego it and say, hey, I don't want to redistrict. I like the line the way we are, the way they are. We are required to redistrict. The census was conducted in 2020. The resulting data was made available to counties in September of 2021, which obviously has sped up the pace in which we're required to get our new district lines drawn. The last time we undertook this process was in 2011, following the 2010 census, but there have been major legislative changes by the state of California since then, so the process and criteria are different this time around. So, the number one requirement when redistricting is population. Our first goal is making sure the population is equal across the board for the five districts. Total population for the county is 45,306. You divide that number by five, which gets us 9,061, and that's the number that, the ideal number, that each district should be in once we're done redistricting. Anything above or below the 9,061 is considered a deviation, and we should have a rationale for having that deviation if, if there is one. Population changes over time, which is why redistricting is required. So, in addition to population, we have, we have state requirements, federal requirements. Federal requirements include the Voting Rights Act, that we cannot change the districts for a discriminatory purpose. So, we can't draw a line so that one minority has no voting power and the voting power goes to the majority, or vice versa. You shouldn't be drawing the lines to gerrymander or to favor one racial party or a partisan office or a certain candidate. So, aside from population, we also need to make sure we are not favoring a certain political party or anyone in particular, so. New requirements, AB 1276 now requires these ranked priorities. The important thing to remember is it's to the extent practical. So, if we can go through the redistricting process and put into place each one of these priorities, great. The problem is, after we get our equal population, getting to some of the other priorities is pretty difficult. So, to the extent practical, we need to make sure the districts are geographically contiguous. We need to make sure the integrity of a local neighborhood or community of interest is respected in a manner that minimizes its division. The integrity of a city or census-designated place shall be respected in a manner that minimizes its division. One thing I'd like to note here is neighborhoods and communities of interest was ranked higher than cities or census-designated places on this list. So, we actually have a higher priority to keep communities of interest in place above a city or designated census place. A designated census place is a town. San Andreas would be a designated census place. It's not a city, but it is official, it's official township in the eyes of the Census Bureau. Easily identifiable and understandable is the fourth criteria. So, that means we need to make sure that the district is bounded by a natural or artificial barrier. The positive side of this is census blocks are bounded by artificial barriers and streets, easily practical items, even though they don't look logical. That is how the Census Bureau drew the blocks, was to follow streets, streams, and ridge lines, anything that was practical for keeping a place together in their mind. They don't know our communities, so that's where we get the fun job of grouping those census blocks back together to create a district. But in the Census Bureau's mind, they already made practical blocks of population for us. And then, the fifth criteria is where it does not conflict with the preceding criteria. I think this language is funny because they say it over and over and over again, so that's where I'm like, to the extent practical, we need to follow all these guidelines. So, the fifth criteria is encourage geographical compactness. So, essentially, we want to make sure each district is as compact as possible, and we don't have long lines going across our county. But that is the fifth criteria. So, by the time we get through the first four, it's pretty hard for us to maintain that last one, so, to the best of our ability. Geographically contiguous. This means, I mean, we can't create a district into islands. Angel City and Valley Springs can't be in the same district unless they are connected across the board, so we couldn't create an island of those two towns. So, in the example, two circles, clearly, that's not contiguous. Another point that we try to keep in consideration is, anyone should be able to travel within their district to any other point within the district without having to go outside of the district. So, that is not a strong criteria, but when we are drawing the maps, we tried to take that into consideration, that if you had to cross, across another district, it probably wasn't as contiguous as the district ought to have been. The same goes for waterways. We can't connect Valley Springs and San Andreas across Hogan without an actual path of travel, unless there was a regular ferry service going across the lake. We couldn't connect that and consider the district contiguous. Although I did have offers, people wanted to start a ferry service, but until it's actually in place, I'm not going to take it into consideration. Geographic integrity of a neighborhood and community of interest. Most of us understand what a neighborhood is, an area where people live and interact with each other, but what is a community of interest? The Constitution defines a community of interest as a contiguous population which shares common social and economic interests that should be included within a single district for the purpose of its effective and fair representation. So, that's pretty wide open. We've left it up to the community at this point to submit communities of interest maps and tell us what their community of interest is and their rationale behind that. I haven't gone through and been like, I disagree with you. Anybody who submitted a community of interest map, I have taken into consideration when drawing the maps that they considered themselves a community of interest. Community of interest should not include relationships with political parties or candidates. Geographic integrity of cities and census-designated places, that's a pretty easy-to-understand concept, just like the communities of interest. To the extent possible, we should not be separating townships or, or cities. One thing I found interesting is some townships did cement themselves as a community of interest. So, if they did that, I held that they had two criterias. They were a community of interest, and they were a census-designated place. So, they, they had two ranks on the, on the profile. Easily identifiable and understandable. This was a hard criteria for me to some extent, because what I thought was easily identifiable and understandable isn't necessarily what the public thinks, or...
Or what our census blocks are.
Or what our census blocks are. So, sometimes I made notes because I thought something was an oddity that wasn't necessarily easy to identify or understand, but it still did follow a street or the boundaries of the county, waterways, a mountain range. It still followed the path of travel. So, just because, so I tried to wipe that from my mind of what I thought was easily identifiable and understandable, and tried to just draw maps as, as if I didn't already have set priorities in my head. And then, geographical compactness. To the extent possible, it does not conflict with any of the preceding criteria, we are encouraged to draw compact districts. So, if you can grab a closer area of population without having to reach for a farther area, that should be the goal. And I'm going to give some examples where this was made difficult because we had to follow communities of interest, but to the extent possible, the goal is to have a compact At a glance, ideal, if we could all draw perfect little circles around the county, that's a triangle, so it's hard to draw a circle to begin with, that would be ideal. Not contiguous is to have islands. Not compact is to have squiggly lines, and then, not equal is not an option. So, the population does need to be our number one priority. So, what else is new? I think most of you probably noticed that our first draft maps got adjusted. That was because of the inmate reassignment, when we got new population data from the state, and we are required to use the population data when the state has adjusted it to, to make up for prisoner. So, it has been determined by the state that it unfairly populates a district if they have a prison in their district, and then they get to count all that population because then those, that district has less constituent, which means that district has a higher representation than districts without a prison in it. So, the state has come back, that's another new requirement, and said we have to use the, the adjusted numbers when they send them to us, so our maps were adjusted to account for the new census data. So, California Redistricting Commission is now required to assign all the inmates to an address in which they were most recently resided prior to incarceration. And, I think I covered that. What's not allowed? The board should not adopt district boundaries for the purpose of favoring or discriminating against any political party. Often referred to as gerrymandering, the practice of drawing district boundaries in a way that gives one political party, candidate, or group an unfair political advantage over others is not permitted. But just because a district looks odd does not mean that it was gerrymandered. Most likely, it looks odd because the census blocks are odd blocks. They are not nice square blocks. They are very odd shapes, which, in a rural... They are very odd shapes, which in a rural community, when we have roads that go like this because they're following ridge lines or they're following other things, our blocks all still follow that same roadway. So in the end, they are going to look weird. So why do these districts look so weird? There are many reasons why a district may look like it does. First and foremost, we must have roughly equal population in each district. We don't control where people live, so we have to work within the framework of where they actually reside within the county. After population equality and geographic continuity, the most important criteria is for communities to remain together. Districts should reflect communities, and communities have a wide range of geographic boundaries. Topographical features like mountains, waterways, and ridges, and man-made features like roads do not always go in straight lines. Census blocks. The population number we use are from the federal census taken last year. The census arranges people into population blocks. The census blocks are our unit of measurement for accurate population counts and for drawing district boundaries. The blocks are not always logical to us, nor do they utilize straight lines. The process of redistricting is using the census blocks and grouping them together to create a district, a supervisory district. So I have been asked if we can cut census blocks, and my very easy answer is no because that removes our unit of measurement. Sarah has a really good...
What did I say? I should have written down what I said. There is no, as you will note if you read the Elections Code and the New Fair Maps Act, there's no explicit prohibition against splitting a census block. So while I would say it's not legally forbidden, it is a bad idea for a couple of reasons. As Ms. Turner just said, it is our, kind of our smallest unit of measurement, so we risk inaccuracy if we try to carve that. And of course, anytime we risk inaccuracy, we open ourselves up to, you know, challenges in how the process was done. So while it is not a legal impossibility, it's sort of a practical impossibility and not advisable. Is that what I said, sort of?
Yeah, thank you. And she's not the first attorney who's told me that. I went on several meetings asking like, well, why can't we? And everybody just went...
Why would you do that?
Why would you do that? So I left that as, no, I guess we shouldn't be cutting census blocks. So I went over census blocks and said that some of them looked very odd. This is a map of our county, and these are all the census blocks. So some of the lines, if they didn't have a good cutting point, that's what the Census Bureau found. They found the next logical spot to make a line, which was either a street, oops, a waterway, a ridgeline. You can see up at the northern part of the county, it's obviously fire roads. So it's all over the place. Fortunately, we don't really have to touch that part of the county too much because the population in the most northern, where the census blocks are the oddest, is zero. So the majority of our population is in the southern portions. This is another example of a census block that I found as one of the most interesting ones. You can see that there's other census blocks inside of this one. It ranges from Burson, follows Highway 12, outlines the town center of Valley Springs, and then goes up and catches Campo Seco. What I find interesting about this is it made it hard to split off where a district line, if it came up to there, where it would end, because it was cutting Campo Seco, and if you opted not to cut Campo Seco into, you most guaranteeably would be cutting Burson into. So I just thought that was an interesting one to show people, and what we're dealing when we're trying to place these districts together is we run into issues like that where we have no option if we're going to select that census block is either to pick up the whole thing and try to run with it, or we're cutting something in half. Also, one of our largest communities of interest that was submitted would be the Rancho Calaveras. When you select every census block that covers Rancho Calaveras, you get a population of 7,697. That is a very large concentration of population. I would say the largest in the county. And once we grabbed all of those, the next thing we were doing was splitting the next neighborhood over, which was La Contenta, and I'm not as familiar with the subdivisions on the west side of the highway there, but there was also comments submitted that we split subdivisions on the other side of the highway as well with some of our maps. Sorry, do one of you know what subdivision that is? It's on the tip of my tongue.
Mr. Toffenelli.
But we had a few comments submitted.
Did HOA on the top of the hill on the west side near Crest Hill?
That would be on top of the hill, that would be Hillvale Estates.
I don't think I got a comment for Hillvale Estates, but Quell Oaks commented that we are splitting...
Right. That's...
That would be Unit 2 up there, or Unit 1 up there on Crest.
Okay, so we split on the other side a couple of other subdivisions as well.
Sorry, Susan.
So that's where...
Hillvale Estates, Unit 1 of Crest.
Okay.
It was a pointy.
Your mic, got it. So no matter what we do with the way the census blocks are drawn, I can guarantee we're going to walk away with, there's going to be a community of interest or a neighborhood that is split by this process, and that's simply because the census blocks are following streets, and streets are where we have our households, and no matter what, one side of that gets cut with part of those people in a subdivision. Typically, there's houses on the outskirts and then streets on the middle, and the census blocks are following the streets in the middle. So on some of these districts, no matter what, they're going to get split. So I think that's where the guidance from the state is to the extent practical, without cutting a census block to make it line up with the houses or parcels as opposed to the streets. In the end, we're going to cut some communities.
And I'm going to just take a minute and correct myself. Valley Hills Estates.
Oh, okay. Well, it sounds like we are splitting Valley Hills Estates in some of our maps.
Are you sure, Mr. Toffenelli?
I am sure, that's why I corrected myself.
I do want to say when we drew these maps, too, we did take into consideration the subdivisions that were known. Don't necessarily have a full list or mapping of each subdivision, so to the extent we could, at least in the GIS program, do we have a full subdivision map of the whole county. So to what we could, we tried to follow those and break them up as little as possible. So then, I said in the last, we grouped all the population blocks that contained Rancho Calaveras, and we saw that we split La Contenta. So in the next iteration, we tried to include La Contenta without splitting it at all either, and then the population's 9,125. Well, at that point, we're already over the 9,061, that was our goal, so we already have a deviation, but then we split more communities. We split Gold Creek off. So if I wanted to include Gold Creek in the, as well, mainly for a practice for ourselves, Doug and I would go through and see like, what happens if we do this? What happens if we do this? Then we have La Contenta, Gold Creek, and Rancho together, and the population is far over an allowable deviation at 9,477. So the main reason I shared this one is, like I said, it was the most populated condensed area in the county, and so depending on how we draw Rancho Calaveras, it really does impact the rest of the districts. Because by the time we put all of that population in District 5, then where does District 1 draw their population from? They start to get, and you'll see in the iterations where District 5 was an island, District 1 turns into a very long lake across the county, or just envelopes the district So the current map of the county is here. The population...
Those population numbers on there are from the 2010 census, correct?
Yes, so the 2010 population is what's listed. The 2020 population is...
Under current.
Can you see here? Under current population here. The target is the 9,061, and then you can see the deviation using the current population. The 2020 population is slightly estimated because the population blocks no longer follow the supervisory districts, and so we had to guesstimate which side of that line the population was on. Because when we see the census blocks, we aren't told, these are where the little dots actually lie within the square. We are told, here is a square, and there's population inside of it. I don't know from what they send me where that population necessarily lines with inside that block.
Which goes back to why the danger or difficulty or impossibility of splitting them.
I could guesstimate based off of parcels, but again, that's a guesstimate, it's not an exact number.
Ms. Callaway.
Rebecca, this one right here, understanding on the percentage deviation, like on District 1, the deviation is 4.5 above the zero line, and District 3 is minus 2 below. Why are they both in green? Is there something, are you just trying to be colorful, or...
Within the 5%.
They were within the 5% range, and as this process went on, the rules in 2010 were, if you're within 5%, you're good, you don't have to redistrict. The new legislation says, hey, no matter what, we don't care if you're good. You have to redistrict, you have to have these public meetings, and you have to go through this process of listening to community input. So through that, obviously, redistricting's no longer an option. And then I started talking to Sarah also about the 5%, where I'm like, I'm not so sure about this 5% rule anymore. And after she looked into it further, she's like, yeah, I don't think it's really a thing. So of course, I went back to where I...
What does that mean?
Yes, when I say something's not a thing, that's always... No, but all jokes aside, that's not, there is no statutory number that's an acceptable deviation. Our mandate is to make it as close to equal as possible. So there's no set number that we can point to and say, oh, as long as you're within X% then you're good to go. It's, the goal is to minimize it to the extent practical.
So it used to be like between 17 and 21%?
That's no longer...
For that's no longer. So is 5% acceptable or not acceptable?
It depends on how wide you want to open yourself up to a lawsuit. So I should have...
No, I mean, that's, I think that's accurate. I don't think that it is practical or possible in most scenarios to get exactly precise, you know, given the census block, as Ms. Turner's been saying, the likelihood of us getting precisely 9061 in each of the five districts is not there.
And that would be the justification in itself if we are off, that the census blocks lined up, like, there's no guaranteeable 9061 by splitting them out.
Right, so while there is no number we can point to as a percentage that's acceptable, and you know, we can't give a target, it's as little as possible is the goal.
And any deviation, we just have to have a justifiable purpose for doing so. So if the deviation was off by 100 and our justification was we are trying to keep that community of interest intact, that would probably be a justifiable deviation.
Just as a guideline, correct me if I'm wrong, we prefer to be within the area of 2% to be close, you know?
That would be great. Within 1% would be even better. You know, within, up to 5% might be just fine if there are reasons for that. You know, we had to keep the census blocks together, we tried to keep communities of interest together, et cetera.
Reasons that validate the map.
So with that, Draft 1. Draft 1, you can see, you can kind of see, the yellow lines up there are the current supervisory district. District 1 covers from Burson, picks up downtown Valley Springs, and then goes all the way down, cutting through Salt Springs, reservoir near Copperopolis. So that is an interesting district, needless to say. And part of this map was trying to draw the district lines, I mean, the goal in this map was we're shaping community of interest in whole, we're trying to draw the district lines as closely to what they were before as possible, and that's about the extent of it. So every single map I'm going to show you, I'm also going to show you what my offhand, like, notes were with issues with this map. This map overall, in population range, still can be more equal, ranging from 0.6% to 2.5%. Still left some districts where they should have been better aligned. The communities of interest, I'm basing the communities of interest off of what was submitted to us today in the mapper, or if somebody submitted a public comment that outlined an area and made it clear that they were submitting as a community of interest. So the community of interest broken by this were Copperopolis, who submitted a map that covered this lower portion of copper and picked up here. So they drew a rectangle around copper here. So being as we use the highway as a guideline, it cuts their community into. San Andreas, clearly, somebody submitted a map for San Andreas, and clearly, San Andreas got split into two supervisory districts. Vallecito, portions of their town also got split. Rancho Calaveras was split in this draft. Valley Hills Estates, as community of interest, was submitted for that, and it was split in this draft as well. Cities and census designated places, San Andreas and Vallecito, which are also listed as a community of interest, were divided in this draft. So is it easily identifiable and understandable? I think for the purpose of what this was trying to do, yes, we did follow the guidelines we were supposed to follow to draw the map. Some things were odd to me, like Murphy's Pines, which I felt, personally felt, and then we had public comments submitted to say the same, was shifted from District 3 to District 2 to make up population. Whether that actually falls in easily identifiable, I think is questionable. I just found it difficult to understand. So moving on to Draft 2, you can see in each iteration, the current supervisory districts are outlined in the gold color. It's hard to see when it goes around District 1, but they are outlined. Population, we are definitely on the outer threshold of acceptable population. I would think if we went with a draft like this, we should further modify it, which you'll see in 2A and 2B, were other options similar, but it was modified to equal out population. What's wrong with, what issues did I find with Draft 2? Number one is I don't think population is adequate in this version. Communities of interest, Copperopolis, Vallecito, and Rancho Calaveras were all divided. Census designated places, Vallecito was divided. Is it easily identifiable? Again, I put Murphy's Pines shifted from District 3 to District 2. Draft 2A, the population is a little bit better. Still not ideal. I would suggest if we were interested in this map at all, that further modification needed to be made to even out population. Aside from population, Copperopolis and Rancho Calaveras, both noted as communities of interest, are divided. Draft 2B, again, this was taken off of the first draft 2, and it's a modification from those. At this point, population is looking decent, and other issues in... At this point, population is looking decent and other issues included, Rancho Calaveras is divided. We pretty much covered every other community of interest that was submitted. And what I would say for easily identifiable, again, this is my opinion, it didn't actually, I don't think it actually meets the criteria, but I'd like to point out Murphy's Pines and the north of Summit Level Road were shifted from District Three to District Two. So for whatever reason, going away from the school district boundaries and the ridge line between District Two and District Three personally bothers me because I keep noting that. I just think that those communities are pretty well intact on either side. They have different school districts, they don't normally socialize or do anything together as a community. So I found it an oddity to shift them from one side to the other, but that's just my And then Draft Three, population was very good in this draft. It potentially could be modified further. I couldn't find an area to pull from that didn't start splitting into another community to do so though. Issues with the draft, population is in what would probably be considered an acceptable range. Rancho Calaveras, San Andres are both divided in this draft, based off of public comment of what a community of interest is. We tried to keep San Andres as intact as possible, but it didn't match up with the community of interest map submitted for San Andres, so I put that it was split. Census and Cities and Census Designated Places, Campo Seco, which is considered a census designated place, was divided in this draft. And that would have been because of that census block that covers from Burson to Campo Seco. Easily identifiable and understandable, downtown section of Valley Springs shifted to District Two, that's just out of the ordinary. It's hard for me to think of Valley Springs not attached to the Burson and other areas, but again, it's a matter of my opinion. It still followed roads, they may have been minor roads, creating what looked like a difficult to understand split near Valley Springs Town Center. But that split is based off of, it's hard to see here, so I think if anyone was interested in looking at it further, we could open it up with, and have Doug share his screen to go in on any of those parts. But there's just like what look like little fingers going down from District Two and slicing into District One that I think look odd, but they're following census blocks. Draft Four, well, population is awesome on Draft Four, probably couldn't get much better. What is wrong with Draft Four? The communities of interest identified as Mountain Ranch, San Andres and Sheep Ranch, Valley Hills Estates are all divided in this draft. Is it easily identifiable? Yes, to the whole intents and purposes. It is an oddity that Arnold is shifted from District Three to District Two. Again, I think that's a me personal opinion and not necessarily an actual requirement.
He just wants a Jeremander, what are you doing?
So the most noted would be the splits. San Andres, again, we tried to keep intact as possible, but it didn't meet the community of interest map submitted. Part of, what district are we having in now? Part of District Four picks up the pole station portion of San Andres.
Ms. Callaway.
Rebecca, I don't understand why Sheep Ranch and Mountain Ranch, why they're-
It's because of the way, I mean, the intents and purposes, the actual townships of those stayed intact. However, the community of interest maps that were submitted, overlaid over the top of this, were split by this iteration.
So that's a perceived community of interest submission by a member of the public?
Yes, a member of the public submitted a community of interest map and our map split what they submitted as a community of interest.
So where would Sheep Ranch go on that?
Sheep Ranch follows very closely to the District Two, District Three border and it goes as low as the yellow, which is being picked up by District One and probably halfway between that first line up, that is the Arnold, is what the map was drawn as. Draft Five.
Sorry, create it.
The population is also acceptable in this iteration and we could look at trying to make it more. What we did in this draft was try to keep Rancho Calaveras whole. We had a lot of public comments submitted for Rancho Calaveras, that it should be a community of interest and kept intact. So this iteration was trying to take into consideration that public comment and pull Rancho together to the best ability we could while still keeping the population even and trying to take into consideration the neighborhoods that also would be, could be split. This is a little bit different, we now have Angels and San Andres grouped together. So population is good, communities of interest, public comment identified Copperopolis and Rancho Calaveras as communities of interest and both are divided in this draft. So you will notice, even though my primary consideration was Rancho Calaveras in this draft, it was just difficult because of the population, the condensed population of that area to completely isolate Rancho Calaveras while following census blocks. So every iteration, I said that we did not meet Rancho Calaveras because we did not meet what the community submitted as their map, but this was the draft where we could most closely do that. Copperopolis also, even though it, close, it cuts off the, well, you can see what it cuts off, it cuts off the subdivisions to the northeast of copper and the community of interest map that was submitted. So with that, that, oh, don't let me forget, public draft one. We also had a member of the public, a committee submit a draft map and their population is They followed our draft two and just further equalized the population. Issues with that draft were Copperopolis and Rancho Calaveras communities were divided. Again, they were divided by the community of interest map submitted for those communities. So that is the end of my presentation. I think what we would do, what I'm interested in knowing is, is there maps that we want to further make changes to? Is there input on how you think a different map could be put together? I do have to say that we tried to go around the county, collecting communities and finding all the iterations we could where we split them up the least amount to submit maps. But I think there's more that could be looked at and we're obviously continuing to gather public input. After we published the agenda on Wednesday, we received numerous comments from the public, either what drafts they like or additional community of interest being submitted, so we need to take that still and come back and see how we can accommodate that for the November 9th meeting. Anyways, I am finished and I don't-
Thank you, Ms. Turner. I, you know, to summarize it, I, you know, had a brief discussion with Ms. Turner last week, just on how we're going to proceed with this meeting. You know, we all have many community interests that we all care about. Our number one priority is to get the population as equal as possible throughout the county and then consider those other communities and interests and cities in order after we hit that population mark. It's going to be stretched to get District Two at this time to look anything like it does now with its negative 18.3% on population. So I want to bring this back to the board and I think the best way for us to proceed at this time is to pick, you know, we have our map as it sits now, we can use that in the background and thought, but, you know, overall, we need to work, find a base to work off of. And I would like to get a consensus of the board on, you know, I think we all have issues with all the maps in one way or another, but we need a base to start working off of. And so if one of these draft maps is the one, or do we want to work from our current supervisory districts and then start working the population outward from District Two, which, and try to get that as equal as possible? So is there any consensus on which maps we would like to start with? Ms. Fuldorff, I'll start with you and we'll work our way to the left.
Being a little bit selfish, I prefer Draft Four because it hits most of the population within its range, but I am open to looking at all color debate.
She has her mic on, Ms. Crane, just hold it a little closer to you.
I'll project a little bit more, sorry, Marty. I said, I would prefer Draft Four because it is the closest to the population numbers, but I am open to a consensus of other input from the rest of the board.
Thank you. Mr. Toffenelli.
I, excuse me, I prefer we start with the current map.
Mr. Toffenelli is the current map. This, you know, knowing this is, there's going to need to be some significant changes to a certain degree. I agree with Ms. Fuldorff on Draft Four, but, you know, with that being the most equal population, but at the same time, I'm definitely willing to work off of our current map also. So I'll listen to the rest of the board and make my decision as- Mr. Garamidi.
Well, if we've got to go with one of the presented, I would say- Sorry about that. If we have to go with what's presented, I would say Draft One, but I could start working off the current map as well. There's not a huge changes, I mean, there's a lot of population changes in current map and Draft One, but we know these districts and so it's easier for us to maneuver our way through them.
Draft One or current?
More on the draft, since we have to make changes, more maybe the Draft Twos. Oh, sorry, thank you. More on some of the Draft Twos. We're going to have to take a bite somewhere.
So before this continues going this way, we could look at every single draft and make changes to it. There's no opposition to that. There's not a current map drafted, so I do want to say I'm not opposed to it, but saying current district map means we're just starting with a clean slate and we're drawing the districts new, which, that's not something that, that's not something that we couldn't do, but that's what that would be. It's-
Starting from scratch.
It's starting from scratch, which there's no reason that we could not do that. However, I think when we're doing this, we do need to keep, the goal is we're keeping communities of interest and population not to match the current map.
Yeah, I just want to jump in as well. I think, put another way, all other things being equal, presuming that we hit all the statutory criteria in the correct order, there's nothing wrong with also then looking at, does this match what we have currently or what we have in our heads of what our current districts are? But to be clear, trying to keep it as close to the current districts is not one of the statutory criteria.
Yeah, understood. Well, we got a 4-4 and original draft split. I'm looking at this and I'm seeing Draft One, which, you know, presents its issues, being the closest to the current map, not that that is the top of the criteria, but it has some of the considerations put forward, but definitely splits a lot of our communities of interest. Does the board, I'm going to ask Mr. Garamidi and Mr. Toffenelli, because I said I would switch my idea one way or the other for the, starting from the beginning. Do we want to do the work from scratch or do we want to go off of one of the draft maps? And if you want to think further, because, I mean, we're really getting to the bricks and mortar of this, I could present public comment and then we could take that into account on how we want to proceed forward with which draft, you know, which may be a good idea. Ms. Callaway, you turn on your light? Okay, Mr. Garamidi, do you want to say something or do we want to-
I mean, if we're going to pick a draft map, and as I said, I'd pick draft number one and adjust it, I would suppose. I guess we're going to adjust all of these. Gary, where are you at?
I would draft one. I would pick it, other than the current map, I would agree with you on draft one.
Okay, I mean, and that way we can start working from, on moving some of the stuff around to appease some of the public comments that have been presented since Draft One. I could agree with Draft One, working off that for a base and then we have to start taking into consideration the comments on communities of interest, cities and everything else that have been put in. Will that work for you, Ms. Turner, for a better base to work off of? I mean, there's a disparity on population there that I see is a little bit higher than some of the other ones, so it's going to take some work to work off of one, number one.
Agreed, so the consensus, thank you. The consensus at this point is to look at Draft One and see how we can make-
Ms. Fuldorff, are you good with Draft One?
The only concern I have with Draft One is it does cut District Four and having to go through another district to connect back in.
Let me double check that because-
And it is in the corner, it is in the upper corner along Perret's Ferry, Morning Cave, and that is why I did not prefer the first draft.
That would be a small change we possibly could, I'm looking at it now and we could possibly fix that with adjusting the lines. I mean, this is just a basis, but something to consider as we move forward. Yeah, absolutely. You got a good point there. So you would be fine with that, working off of that?
Yeah, as long as we're able to consider, because one of the areas of interest, which has been consistent through all the drafts, is Vallecito being split.
Okay, Mr. Toffenelli is a yes, from what I'm understanding, I could work with that. Mr. Garamidi, you're a one. Ms. Callaway, I just want to see, are you okay with working forward from that point forward?
Yeah, not my preference, but I'm okay with that.
Agreed. So that's a consensus on, we're going to work from Draft One and modify it from there. I'm going to go ahead and give the public the opportunity to comment now and then, so that we can, with them know- and then, so that we can, with them knowing that we're gonna work from Draft One, and then, uh, we can consider the comments moving forward as we get into the brick and mortars of this map. So, public comment. Yes, absolutely, ma'am.
Greetings.
Greetings.
So, basically, I have a question. I was really excited about, I know we're going from Draft One, but, uh, in looking at Draft Four, there seemed to be, um, a green spot in the area of what's currently Five, Section Five, um, and the purple seemed to go in the lower part. I wonder, would it be possible or difficult to bring up Draft Four for a quick second?
Absolutely, we'll work with you during public comment, but we're gonna limit to you through three minutes.
Okay, well, that's all, my question is, it, Draft Four looked magnificent in the standpoint of Region Five, unless that green dot in the center of the southern hemisphere there was all that, um, Five was. I couldn't understand why the, all that purple, there was a green island, so that was, was that, was I seeing it correctly?
Yeah, yeah, Five is very small, so that green dot is District Five?
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
So, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Further, further public comment, thank you. And if you, if you, if you're willing, please identify yourself so we know who we're talking to, if you're willing.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, my name's Amy Augustine, I'm representing the City of Angels Camp. I'd like to submit this letter, which is signed, so that it can go into the public record, which identifies me as the official representative for the city for redistricting. I apologize for coming into the process late and we did not realize that all of the options were still open, but bottom line, will come as no surprise to you, the City of Angels Camp, um, which also considers itself a community of interest. I suspect that that legislation actually was thinking of urban areas with huge cities as opposed to more rural areas where, in fact, our city is a community of interest. These are our primary and secondary sphere of influence. The city first and foremost asks that the entire primary and secondary sphere of influence for the city be contained within a single district. Our transportation, our water, our wastewater is all tied together, we share the same social, economic interests, and we would ask that any final map include that, as well as, we would like to be notified directly, if at all possible, um, so that we can more quickly respond to any changes in the maps. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Um, I don't believe we have any direct questions at this time, Ms. Augustine, your, thank you for your time, and we will definitely consider your comments for the City of Angels as we proceed.
Thank you.
Further public comment.
Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com, and I'm also a resident of Rancho Calaveras. It's been a long time since we've been up here, it's nice to see you all again. I'm glad the public's finally being allowed here, it's, that feels really odd to be here again. Anyway, uh, thank you very much Rebecca Turner for the informative presentation. Um, the public didn't know about these federal census block lines, that they had to be followed in this process until yesterday, basically, when I asked her if that was something that was absolutely set in stone and couldn't be moved. It would have been very, very helpful, much earlier in the process, for us to have known about these census block lines, that they had to be followed. This happened, I believe, ten years ago, Gary, when some of the lines moved in your area and in La Quinteta, and we were never told why those lines moved, and at this point, we weren't told either why some of these lines made no sense. And my point only is that it, um, has frustrated the public, trying to submit these communities of interest, not knowing these restrictions that were placed, and we spent a lot of time and effort trying to get things straightened and, um, you know, led to a lot of frustration here. So, it would have been very helpful for, much earlier in the process, for you to be straight and forward and open about what the restrictions were, what the rules of the game are for us to be playing here. Just venting, thank you, thank you, spent a lot of time on this. Um, that being said, I always try to give productive input. I've submitted many comment letters, I've submitted community of map interests, I've had many emails with the clerk, very helpful, thank you, um, and I've looked at the draft maps, and frankly, I'm baffled by all of the maps. They just don't make sense, other than balancing in population. You know, I, I know that's the main point, you have to balance population, but they don't make sense, other than that. Every one of them splits communities of interest, some of them major, some of them split them in half. Um, geographically, the, the districts don't make a lot of sense, you've got areas way up in Highway Twenty-Six, uh, east of Mokeelma Hill, that are joined with, uh, half of Copperopolis and the opposite part of the county, that makes no sense. So, I'm not sure what the point of, other than just exercise and demonstration of drawing lines every way you want to, to balance numbers. These maps just aren't practical, so, um, you can't comment on each one, each one, there's no way online to comment, there's no way to actually tweak those lines. As the, um, staff report notes, Calaveras County does not provide a tool for the public to use to, to develop redistricting alternatives, so the public can't get in there, get in there and actually move lines or tweak them. So, without being able to work with those blocks and those lines and not even knowing that was a parameter, we can't get involved in that process. Um, it would have been helpful to have a mapping tool that we could use, and as a member of the public suggested to me, it would have been helpful for us to have a workshop with those maps on the wall, so people can actually see them, 'cause they're very hard to see online.
Ms. Platt?
Yes.
Um, your three minutes has been up for a moment.
I'm sorry.
But I do want to answer here a few of your questions.
I didn't, I would have liked a warning, sorry.
Uh-huh.
I would have liked a little warning and I could have wrapped up.
Uh, um, if you watch the lights there.
I don't watch lights, I watch you.
They, they, they work and they go across for warning for thirty seconds and everything else. But I'll, I'll, I'll let you know that, uh, we did have a community input meeting in Rancho Calaveras and Copperopolis, which I attended, and then each individual district that other supervisors attended, um, that were similarly affecting them. So, there's two supervisors at many, many of these meetings.
Not with these maps.
Um, they were filmed, and we did talk about the census blocks then, and you did post them to the website, and as part of the information, that's accessible. So, the census blocks have been talked about as we proceeded since, since September, the beginning of September.
Not that they were set in stone, there was nothing about that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, all right.
No, it's, it's okay, it's okay, but you know, you could go back and watch them and, you know, they're talked about.
I did, and I've read everything, and there's nothing that says these are absolutely set in stone and the guidelines, the boundaries have to follow it.
Understood, um, we're past the back and forth. Uh, and this is the first meeting where we're talking about all the draft maps, and I think everyone here is in agreement with you about, none of them fully makes sense to any of us. Um, so, there's, if there's one spot that's taken care of in one draft map, it, it pushes people onto another one, because absolutely, population is the number one criteria, and we will move forward, trying to get it as good as possible with that criteria in mind. So, I, I, I definitely take to heart your comments and everything, um, and this is our first public working meeting for, for this. Other than that, our hands have been tied about doing anything to that point until now. So, please, continue your comments, I appreciate everything that you put in. I've, I've read them, I followed it, you were, uh, I believe you had one comment for Rancho Calaveras before anybody else did, before these draft maps came out. Um, from, from what I read, it's, looked like you had written it. You, you always stay very involved, and I appreciate that, and I would hope you would continue.
Thank you, thank you, and I hope you guys can have a workshop or something for us, thank you.
Good morning, Ralph Copeland, Copperopolis, D4. How y'all doing? Good to see you, it's been a while. Okay, um, keeping the integrity of Copperopolis and the anchor being Lake Tullock, the gem of Calaveras County, um, uh, I believe D, map D4 would be the, uh, most appropriate map to follow. I agree with, uh, D1, but seven out of the eight presentations split up Copperopolis. Uh, and with all due respect to Supervisors Toffinelli and Stopper, we do not belong in your district. Um, we're just not built that way. Um, we belong on the Highway Four corridor that leads east to Angels Camp, Murphy's, and so forth. I'm not saying we should have Murphy's, but we do, we play, we shop, uh, we entertain in Angels Camp. Um, uh, so that's, uh, uh, my position there. Um, as far as the mapping online, fortunately, I had a career where I worked with these type of features, and I was able to download and present to our, uh, community, a, uh, through the, uh, social media, Facebook and Nextdoor, and I entered those comments and hopefully the links will connect to where you can, uh, review the comments, the thumbs up, the thumbs down, the smiles, the cries, and the comments again, uh, there. I'm the one that also wrote, uh, the, uh, public comment that you see for, uh, Copperopolis, uh, presented today. Um, what that is, is basically the community plan, uh, that was drawn up years ago, and I added some interpretation to it, but that's one thing that we definitely do need, is a community plan for Copper, Copperopolis, but that's another meeting. Um, my point in submitting the, uh, uh, what I did for the public comment was showing you how important it is to keep Copperopolis together, how important it is for us to move on, and also, uh, how important it is to work with the, uh, continuing building and the expansion of Copperopolis. Uh, splitting, like, D5, Draft Five, splitting it, excuse me, into, uh, D5, uh, Draft Five puts us half of the thing, I'm sorry, half of the, uh, Copperopolis into the haves and haves not. We have enough division already in Copperopolis, and we're working through that through community meetings and, uh, and what I'm talking about is between the, um, uh, new developments and the existing people.
Mr. Copeland.
And so, we've done a lot of work there, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Um, just a reminder, that there's lights there on, on the podium that light up. We are lighting up when it's thirty seconds on yellow, correct?
It doesn't, it's skipping.
Is it right now? Well, I do, I do apologize for that, that's a little bit unfair, I, sorry, Ms. Platt, sorry, Mr. Copeland, um, it's not my intention to not have a warning prior to it, but we all know coming in here, we have three minutes, and I've had to be on the other side of that podium before and stick to it, so, um, my apologies for that. Uh, further public comment. And ju- just to check, do we have people raising their hands out, out there also? Good, right.
Marty Crane, first of all, are the speakers out here turned on, because we have people that aren't able to hear? So, are there speakers out here? If there are, are they turned on for out here? Anyway, sorry, um, this morning I came here really frustrated, and I just want to say to Rebecca, kudos, a lot of work, lot of work, doesn't make any sense, but I figured that was just me, but now I can see, no, it's just a huge, huge undertaking. Um, I just wanted to say that I live in Rancho Calaveras, and it was established in nineteen sixty-seven by Boise Cascade, and it is considered the largest subdivision in the state, so I've been told, uh, six thousand acres. Um, uh, the Rancho Special Plan was adopted in nineteen sixty-six as a longstanding community of interest. Everyone who has purchased property in Rancho has been given a copy of the special plan. The plan makes assurances that impact their decisions to spend their life savings in that location. Uh, Rancho is a community of interest, I think we've all agreed that it is. Um, my request would be that you not split off any more of Rancho into different districts, although I've been to every single, until this year, every single redistricting meeting for the last thirty years, and it seems like we moved part of it to District One, and now we want to take another more section of that and move it into District One again, um, but I've been told that there are other ways to move additional, different boundary lines to get those four hundred and some odd people. I agree with Ralph, Rancho has nothing in, uh, no common interest with, with, um, Copperopolis Town Square. You know, it, they did that once before, and if, and if the development there booms, like some people want it to, or expect it to, what would then happen with the population of Rancho? Cut it in half? I don't know. Um, so anyway, please do not divide or split any further, or carve out any parts of Rancho again. Um, I, like I said, I think there are other options that would not damage our sense that we're feel, and feeling a community, or how we facilitate the logistics of our individual lives. A lot of people have little kids who are just starting in school, and they've made friends, and then you take them out of that district, put them in another school, it's a frightening thing. It's just something, I don't have children in school, but I hear it, you know, that that's just another fear, right in the middle of COVID, you know, they're already stressing, so I just would, uh, want you to look at that. Um, so, we're counting on you, and I just wanted to say that, um, I appreciate that, I don't think any of Sheep Ranch has been split, and I remember them saying in the meetings, um, leave us alone. So, anyway, that's all, we're counting on you, and thank you for your work, and when Colleen, when you said that there's gonna be another, um, meeting, town hall meeting, I think what she was saying is, we want the maps in paper on the walls. Okay, I know.
You, Marty.
I see it, thank you.
Further comment inside the room, or shall we go to outside and give you another opportunity when we're done, for the rest of the people in the room? Raised hands. All right, we'll go to the people out there and somewhere.
There we go.
Hi, um, good morning Chair Stopper, Board Members and Community, my name is Janet Sterling, and I live in Diamond Twenty in Copperopolis, and as has stated by Ralph and, um, others on the website, Copper needs to stay together. We are one community with many shared interests, and some of the maps has shown Diamond Twenty being split, and that is a community of interest. We are all one here in Diamond Twenty, so it would absolutely not be appropriate to split Diamond Twenty in the north from the south. We have shared community and interest. For example, we've had severe storm issues in the past, where we've had to utilize the help of our previous supervisor, and they have been helpful, but as you guys know, dealing with, um, two supervisors and also trying to deal with the county and the state and the feds is incredibly difficult. We also share interest with Angels, as has been mentioned now. We not only shop there, but we also have to deal with a lot of our medical issues and services in Angels, because although Copper has the new clinic, it does not provide all of the services, for example, x-rays and things like that, we go to Angels for that. Um, Copper and Angels are communities that should be together, Copper should not be put with Valley Springs or Rancho, as stated. The distance is too far, we do not in Copper identify at all with that area, we again, identify with Angels, as that's where, you know, we do our shopping, we do. We, again, identify with Angels, as that's where, you know, we do our shopping, we do our entertaining, we do medical issues. Our children, they start school here in Copper, but they complete it in Angels. So there's a lot of community of interest between these two towns. So I believe separating Copper and Angels would be a huge disservice to our community, and I would request, would respectfully request that Copper and Angels stay in District Four.
Thank, thank you, Janet.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Mickey Williamson.
Yes, good morning. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciated the detail and appreciate all the work that's gone into what's been done so far. And I just want to make a very quick comment about the Murphy's Pines issue. That happens to be where I live. And putting Murphy's Pines in District Two really is almost impossible, because in order for us to even get to District Two, we would either have to go through Murphy's and into Sheep Ranch or Avery, or through Angels and San Andreas to get there. So we have no roads that even, I mean, even connect with District Two, so I just want to make sure that that was clear.
Thank, thank you, Mickey. We appreciate your comment.
There's no further online comment?
For the time being. All right, we'll give another opportunity for the rest of the people out in the audience to comment if they wish. If not, we'll, Roberta?
Hi. Roberta Corso from Rancho Calaveras. So I was trying to work on these maps, too, so my question is, the census block map, is it going to be available? So I could kind of start from scratch from there with our current districts, any of so. How do I find it? Because I looked for that. I could not find it.
It is currently available. So if you go to the map, original map on redistricting, and you zoom in on it, it, it's one of the checkboxes on the left. It is, I'm looking at it right now. It is labeled right below our existing supervisors' districts, Redistricting 2021 Population Blocks. And if you scroll in or zoom in on the map, those show themselves. Sometimes I got to uncheck the different drafts as I move forward, so there's no confusing lines overlapping them.
So I have to take it clear down to there?
Yeah, and you make, make sure that one's checked, so it shows up when you zoom in on it. And I'll show you the population in those census blocks at the same time. It was a little confusing. I had a question yesterday that was brought up, that somebody asked the same question. Now, I was saying census blocks.
Right.
But it's redistricting 2021 Population Blocks, is how it's labeled on the sidebar.
Okay, because I didn't start from that at all, so whatever work I did, I don't feel was probably very valid at this point.
Right. No, and, and it took me a little while to figure it out, clicking on everything also, so I understand your question.
And I do appreciate your presentation. It really did help me understand all the different maps and the areas and concerns, so thank you for that. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, and I'll just remind everyone, because it's come up a couple times, this isn't our final meeting.
Yes.
So, and you're going to have an opportunity for more public comment after we make it more complicated as a Board of Supervisors today.
Can I add in too? We don't have a mapping tool for the public to use, one, because that would be very expensive for us to purchase a tool like that. However, we have had the public submit paper maps. And the one that was submitted, they took one of our drafts, and they drew lines on it following the census blocks, and then we inputted it into the tool so that everyone can view it as an alter, a map alternative to be looked at. So even though we don't have a tool, because we just don't have the funds to make something like that available, we will take paper maps and we will draw them into the tool for you. Well, so the map that was submitted before, they took a PDF of areas they wanted adjusted from our draft map, and they just drew lines on the census blocks, following the census blocks, telling us we want this section to move here, and we want this to do. And so they just took blowups, blowups of the map from online, and then made their changes, and then sent them to us as a PDF. And we were able to take that and then turn it, turn it into their alternative.
Any further public comment in the room or online? You already commented.
Oh, I am. It could have been some.
Did you change your mask? I recognize the mask. You, you'll have an opportunity to comment during the next meeting when we have this again, so please keep your questions in mind. And please submit them as we go forward. We're making it all part of the record as we proceed, everyone. So any further one to comment that hasn't commented in the past? With that, I will bring it back to the board, and at this time, we're, let me make sure that clock is right, because it's off sometimes. It's 11:53. Before, let's go ahead and take lunch, and then come back at the end of lunch, and then get into work, unless I'm missing something. Is every board member okay with that? Concluding public comment and moving on to lunch? Looks like it. No one's complaining. So we'll come, huh? Let's, is everyone okay coming back at 1:00? Good luck. No, we're not. We're going to bring it back after lunch. I'm just.
We're, we're discussing lunch, just.
Do we want to break or go?
Yeah, we want to break or continue.
I'm confused between ham and pastrami, so.
So if we change our masks, can we re-comment?
No. No. Yeah, no, we're going to take lunch, and we're going to come back. We've got a lot of work to do, and we're not going to get this done in the next six minutes. 1:00, please.